Of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees to order. And we are going to start with our roll call, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam President. President Taylor.
I'm here.
Vice President Nicolet.
Good afternoon.
I am here. Trustee Church.
Here.
Trustee Mayberry.
Here.
Trustee Rodriguez. Trustee Smith.
Actually, she's out of town.
Okay. And our student representative, Ivy.
Here.
Madam President, we have a quorum.
Oh, great, great. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We're going to start with our -- we'll continue, I should say, with our Pledge of Allegiance. Madeline, we're going to ask you to lead us in the pledge, in your new position. Break you in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to go to the consent agenda. Going to go to the consent agenda. These are items that are typically generally routine in nature. Before us, we have Consent Agenda Items 2.02 through 2.30. And I'm going to ask if any trustee, and I believe Dr. Nicolet has an item you'd like to remove. Please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, 2.14.
Okay.
Thank you.
Agenda Item 2.14, so we'll ask staff to get into position for that item. Any other items from my colleagues on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, then if it is the pleasure of the board looking for a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items -- oh, public comment. Thank you. It's been a few weeks, our practice. Do you have any public comment on the consent agenda? No, we don't. Okay, thank you very much, JJ. Thank you, counsel. Okay, if it is the pleasure of the board looking for a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 2.02 through 2.13 and 2.15 through 2.30.
A move to approve?
It's moved by Trustee Mayberry, seconded from Trustee Rodriguez. Any discussion on these items? Seeing none? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Okay, seeing none. The motion is carried, let the record show it is unanimous, which is six to zero today. We're going to ask staff to get into position for Consent Agenda Item 2.14 and ask Dr. Nicolet to prepare her questions as they do just sat. And then the superintendent would like to make a comment on this as we jump into this again, is Consent Agenda Item 2.14. Please go ahead.
Thank you, President Taylor. I just want to acknowledge for the trustees and the public that when we bring forward an item with a significant price tag, as this one has, it is incumbent upon us as a team to provide you with as much thorough information as possible. And I think we didn't do as good a job of that on this one. And so I know that that led to a lot of questions, and we definitely want to engage in that conversation. But we will make a concerted effort moving forward with these staff reports to make sure that they are more thorough. And so I just wanted you all to know that.
Appreciate that, Madam Superintendent. And then just for the public, if you don't know, as you follow along, or though some of you attend often, so you realize this, but there is always additional information on the staff reports for these agenda items that goes into some of the detail, quite a bit of detail in some cases, in most cases, that helps to provide some of the background information for us as well as for members of the public on these agenda items. And that's what the superintendent was alluding to. So, Dr. Nicolet, you have questions, comments, and staff, thank you for being here.
Yes, I do, and thank you very much, because I really do hate to pull you away from your day, but this is important, 2.3 million. And it's not really the price tag that caught my eye, it's some other things that some are kind of qualitative and some are quantitative. And so I'll just kind of begin with the document before us, 34 pages. And as our president alluded to, this is all online, so there are no secrets here. How do you, Chief Ernst, how do you want me to go about asking? I have a plethora of questions. How do you prefer I approach this?
Sure. Thank you, Trustee Nicolet. Madam President, Superintendent Enfield, again, Joe Ernst for the record, Chief Accountability Officer, I have Mike Gifford, now Principal of AACT, former Principal of Shaw, former pilot school using paper within our school district. Then I have Randy Drake from the Grants Department, who also handles a lot of the legal side of things that we do in grants. So I think what could be a productive approach to the questioning is we've got really the implementation level questions that I think Mr. Gifford will be really equipped to answer. If it is more on the contractual side of things and things that you want more information about there, I think that Randy would be a real good resource for us that way. And then district-wide types of questions, I'd be happy to answer those as well.
Thank you.
Does that help you kind of frame your direction, Dr. Nicolet?
Absolutely. I will have to flip back and forth, because you did such an eloquent job of parsing that into three areas, and I kind of put them into three different areas.
Okay.
But we will get there.
Okay. And then one other thing, too, we do have Andrea Sullivan from Purchasing, who really is a wonderful resource that looks all of this information over, and she's here as well if we have some questions that way.
And I might add that our purchasing department won an award.
Right.
So yes, we are stellar.
Okay.
And let me preface this inquiry, if you will, by -- I want personally, and I'm pretty sure I can speak for my colleagues, we want to support programs that help our students, help our teachers, help our families, help our district in general. And if this program is designed to do that, I can get beside it. But I have questions, some concerns. I'll just start at the top, and so I'm thinking this is probably for Mr. Drake. Hey, Randy, how you doing? Why do we want to do a joiner with Reynoldsburg City School District? What does that gain us?
Good question. Superintendent Enfield, Trustee Randy Drake with the Grants Department. Federal and state procurement regulations allow us, number one, to join an existing state contract, federal contract, district contract. If we didn't join an existing contract for these services, then that would trigger federal procurement regulations. And for this amount of money, at a minimum, we would have to do an RFP, Request for Proposal. That would then bring purchasing into even more of the ballgame here. And I'm sure Ms. Sullivan could speak to this, but we're probably talking six months down the road to get to a point where we can provide these services to our students. So that's the first reason.
Yes, thank you. That was spot on. I appreciate that. So, and the reason I asked the question was because in Attachment B, the updated -- and JJ, I will help you the best that I can. It is the updated Attachment B, which is really the joiner and Amendment One to Paper Education Company, Inc. service agreement. I think it would be helpful if I can --
You'd like her to pull that up?
Yep, thank you. I knew she was there. So when I look at Paragraph Three, it begins "all exhibits in association with this joiner and Amendment One." I go to the last sentence. "Notwithstanding anything to the contrary in this joiner Amendment Number One is expressly understood and agreed that this joiner and Amendment Number One does not impose additional liability, rights, or obligations for Reynoldsburg City School District or otherwise modify in any way the agreement between Paper Education Company and Reynoldsburg City School District." Why does that need to be in there? To me, that was a red flag, that we're mentioning our joiner partner, and we're not mentioned. What is that?
Trustee Nicolet, I'm reading this right now. I know that Ms. Sullivan played a role in getting this language in the contract to assist us, so.
Okay. And she's walking up. Thank you.
While Ms. Sullivan comes, thank you very much. This is Attachment B, first page, second paragraph.
Yes, first page. Third paragraph.
Sorry, third paragraph.
There's a short sentence in between one and two. It begins "all exhibits in association with this joiner."
So I think the reason that we mention that other school district is we're utilizing their contract as a method to do business with the vendor. But we're not obligating the school district, the other school district, to anything. So we're alleviating them of any liability that we might have by doing business with this vendor. We're just using their contract as a vehicle to do it in order to not have to go through the rigorous RFP process. We wanted to get services to students as quickly as possible using these funds. And so this was the best way we could find. We had a very competent vendor that we had experience with, that has vast experience within the nation at school districts. And we just wanted to relieve them of any liability that happens because of something that might occur between us and the vendor, so.
So there's no reason for reciprocity in that case for Washoe County School District?
Right. I mean, we're doing business with this vendor, and we're just by joining this contract, we're relieving the other school district of their liability. So now this business is between us and the vendor. We're just using the contract as a vehicle.
If I may, the way I saw that was theirs is existing, it's already there.
Correct.
They're allowing us to jump in with them.
Yes.
But what we work out has nothing to do with the agreement that they already have in place.
Right, right. Other than what's on this amendment, we're not amending theirs any other way.
Right.
But we are making some points here, particularly for student data privacy. We wanted to make sure to capture our standard language on student data privacy. We have some better termination language in there and stuff like that, just to protect us so that this combined with theirs constitutes our entire contract.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I think Trustee Church has a question on this, right?
And just to verify, legal looks at everything we do on this?
Yes, it goes through legal. It either, if it's grant funded, it goes through the Grants Department legal, and if it's not grant funded, then it goes to the Office of General Counsel.
I was going to say, Mr. Drake's an attorney, so that's his job is to look at it.
We do have a contract review process that's documented, and it was followed.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Maybe stay in that front row right there, just in case.
Thank you. So same page. When it references Exhibit B, now I'm going off of this. It's not the order that I would have chosen, but I think it's simpler for all of us if we stay on one document at a time. But Exhibit B, same document, it says the quote for 40,000 licenses for two years. And I got to tell you, the financial person in me just kind of, there's a red flag with the fact that this begins August 1st. And we're six weeks into the school district, sorry, school year, and we know that there's going to be some onboarding time. We just absolutely know that preparation is key, and I'm certain that Principal Gifford would agree with that. Preparation is going to be key to its success. So buying 40,000 licenses right out of the chute worries me, given the cost and the timing. Help me get comfortable with that.
Sure, thank you, Trustee Nicolet. I think, again, a very good question, appreciate how deep you're digging into the entirety of this board report and this proposal in front of us. I think really you're looking at, we'll pay for the actual seats that we have. So if it ends up being 33,000 students, 32,000 students, something in that neighborhood, that's what we'll end up paying for. I do think that as far as the actual implementation, it will take a little bit of time to get that implementation. As far as communication plans that we'll have with schools for our principals, for our teachers, for our families, and for our students. And so there will be. And again, I think as a part of the contractual question that you asked, we know that we are still well in the midst of academic recovery and really trying to get additional resources in front of our students as soon as we possibly can. And again, I think that kind of speaks to this. So it's really the ability to try to get this in front of our students quickly. As far as it being August 1st and probably being closer to October 1st, I think that's a fair statement.
Thank you. And also, I got a little confused in the 34 pages of document. Is it a slow onboard? So if we have 1,000 students that purchase the license, that we pay for 1,000? Or do we right out of the chute, moment one, pay for 40,000 students?
Well, I'm hoping Mr. Gifford can talk about implementation there at Shaw, just to kind of give you a little bit of background that way. But really, the intent is to get this in front of our students as much as possible. And when you really look at the services that are provided, it's pretty exceptional. I think as we have brought forward previously to the Board of Trustees, when we look at some of our academic outcomes, and we look at some of our EL learner outcomes most specifically, by being able to have students be able to receive tutoring in Spanish or English is going to be a great benefit. We also know that some of our AP and our honor students, I can tell you from a parent level, sometimes some of those questions that come home, they can be pretty complicated. And those students as well can reach out and get that same level of support. But so as far as that school implementation, maybe have Mr. Gifford speak a little bit to that.
Trustee, sorry, a little nervous.
It's all right.
Mike Gifford. Honestly, the onboarding can go as fast as we want to. As soon as we got through all the legal paperwork and the contract figured out for us, and as soon as the rosters were uploaded, we had a PD, an online PD with their staff, and we decided, we met as a staff, and we decided that we were going to have every student log on through their English class. And the following Monday, they did that. And that just kickstarted the process, because then the students were comfortable with the system, and we kept coming back to it about how to improve it. So once everything gets given the clearance and everybody is rostered, it's pretty quick, as quick as the school wants it to be.
And that's one school, 700 students?
Yes.
Okay, I want to stay with the quantitative, because I do have some qualitative questions as well. So the answer to my question is, yes, we will pay for 40,000 August 1st. That's the answer. Correct?
No, I think we'll pay for the actual number of licenses that we actually have for all six through 12 students. And we're also looking at some students that rise as well.
Sure.
So the actual number of students is what we'll be paying for.
So I think it's me, I really do. So it's a pay-as-you-go. If you have 100 students, you pay for 100. Then you onboard another 200, you pay for 300 now. Do you follow me? Or right out of the chute, are we paying for students that won't receive service for a while?
We do plan to pay in full right away. And as Mr. Gifford talked about with the English class example, and in working with our IT department, we feel like in terms of using Clever and getting the roster information uploaded, that that really will be a pretty quick process upon the contract being executed.
And I will note, if we don't use 40,000 licenses, there's a prorata reimbursement back to the district that purchasing did negotiate with the vendor. Second, this is all being funded by SRR3 funds, and by way of the most recent revision with the Nevada Department of Education, they have approved the funding. So the funding's there, the funding's set. This is the price, if we don't use 40,000 licenses, we get a prorata share back.
Okay, thank you. Gosh, thank you, Randy. And I know that those funds, at this point, may or may not continue. So sustainability is always a question, but that's not really one I have right now. So if we go to the next page under, no, I don't want to do that one. I had so much fun looking at this. This was complex and -- okay, so the last page, JJ, page four.
Page four?
Mm-hmm, page four.
We can all follow.
Mm-hmm. At the very top, it's the paragraph "before return or destruction of data and property." And it's the very first sentence, and it says with paper for educational purposes, "The district may act as the parent's agent and can consent to the collection of students' personal information on the parent's behalf." Is that, you know, that always is a red flag to me. Is that standard that we don't go to the parent? Thank you.
Hi, Andrea Sullivan, for the record again, yes, that's standard FERPA language. We are allowed to act on behalf of our students in a school setting. And a lot of this, all of this language around student data and privacy has been drafted by our Office of General Counsel, and it is something we try to use with almost all of our software or online tools if the contract that is presented to us doesn't already address it. So this is, this language in this amendment is a very common language that we use in amendments all the time, and it is standard FERPA language.
Thank you. I will say, you're helping me understand a lot. I'm actually a little embarrassed that I'm learning so much.
If you love contracts so much, we're hiring. We recruit.
Woo-hoo. Okay, so I'm going to the next document, Exhibit A, and it would be page two, and it would be Section Two, Operation of the Platform. There we go. This is the qualitative, excuse me, the quantitative part that woke me up in the middle of the night, wondering about the student that is online at 12 o'clock. And, because that's, for whatever reason, this is when Diane is going to get her work accomplished. And she finds out that educators qualified to interact with students on all courses, topics, may not be available at all times. I just thought to myself, whoa, heck, Diane's on luck. Talk to me about that. Make me comfortable with the fact that students may run into that.
I'm actually kind of surprised to see that language. Every time that any student mattered, that we had some go at that time of night, they were connected within 15 seconds. What I'm wondering if the language is an educator that has the background in that subject level, possibly, is the only thing I can possibly think of. But they, my understanding and all my communication with them, they pretty much guarantee automatic connection to a tutor within less than a minute.
Vice President Nicolet, I think I might offer that, what I think that language may be, is nobody can offer a 100% foolproof guarantee. And I'm guessing that their legal team probably says to them, you need to include something in here that there is a chance, despite our best efforts, that, you know, a student could log on and we wouldn't have someone. It's unlikely, but the chance is there. And I think that's why that's in there.
And given that reality, because I don't argue with the reality, I worry about the student. So what runs through my mind is that teachers and parents, families, whatever the dynamics are, have to be aware of that situation. Because Diane may go to school the next day and not have her homework completed. And it may be through no fault of her own, maybe it is, she waited too long, but that's a variable that I think is extremely important for teachers and for parents and students to understand.
That's one beautiful part of it, is every conversation is recorded, every transcription is recorded. So if a student got online and couldn't get support, we'd have proof of that.
I know, I would, let me go ahead, Trustee Church.
I was just going to speculate the same thing. You know, if it's a big project and you have 20 kids calling in and there's five tutors, you know, it just, they can't handle everybody at once. Or somebody calls in sick, or there's internet issues, there's catastrophic event where there, you know. So I think that's just legal ease, but what I'm hearing makes me pretty comfortable.
And my thinking on that as well is there may be a subject manner that's at a level where it isn't that common, so you don't have a whole bunch of people on that all the time.
Yeah.
Right? So that there may be an opportime, if it's 3:30 in the morning, you may not get, if two or three people are on, you may miss somebody during that. And it allows for that if it's at some times. What I would think we want to do, back to what Principal Gifford said, is we can pay attention to that and get the feedback, and if it's happening, then that's our conversation back with the vendor saying, hey, we're running into this problem.
Yes, absolutely.
But I think it makes sense that in every subject out there that they cover, 24 hours, they're going to have an unlimited number of people. I just don't think that's reasonable. So I read that as, of course, there's going to be some obscure subject of something, some level of advancement that, and some weird hour of the morning, for whatever the reason may be, that you might not get someone immediately.
Well, and that's why I initially questioned the term 24/7, you can imagine. So, okay, thank you. And I really do appreciate your time, because this, again, is, can be a wonderful tool when used properly, when people understand its use, and everyone understands their role model, their role in the use of it. And so I really do want to understand it. This was another one. JJ, we're on the same document, and thank you so much, number 14, the next page. And it's in the first full paragraph.
What page you on?
We are, it's not a page, it's the Section 14.
Oh, Section 14.
She's almost there. There she is.
That's what I was thinking.
There we go, there we go.
I got it now. Responsibility?
I spent hours trying to make sure that I could be clear for JJ. I hope I did. I'm doing okay. All right, thank you. The next page. There you go. First full paragraph. It's right in the middle there. Paper Education Company, Inc. does not, really? This has to be in there? Guarantee the accuracy, completeness, or usefulness of any information on the platform. What does that mean? They're comfortable giving our students wrong information? I'm sorry, that was a little curt. I'm sorry.
Superintendent.
No, I think that's a very legitimate question. And again, I am surmising here that, again, this is their legal team telling them that, you know, human beings are not perfect, and they are serving a lot of students with a lot of professionals. And I'm guessing that their legal team said, you have to put a clause in there on the chance that somewhere along the way, someone inadvertently told a student that two plus two was five. Whether that was incredibly wrong on their part or inadvertent, it's still, that's my guess, Vice President Nicolet, and I don't know if Joe might have.
Sure, thank you, Dr. Enfield. And I think just really from the site-level experience in terms of seeing that content and seeing the Socratic teaching that takes place, really that questioning to get to student understanding and then building on that understanding to help the student learn more, I think really from a content standpoint over at Shaw, we didn't really run into any problems with the content in that smaller sample size.
With the Socratic questioning, it's really difficult to give a wrong content answer, because they're just asking questions. But again, let's say that a tutor slips up, or, you know, they're human beings, they have a bad day and they say something they shouldn't, we would have record of that, and we would be able to address it directly with the paper team.
Back to the record. So you bring up, you've mentioned that twice, and I got that sense, too, is, so whose obligation is it responsibility to go back and do the work? Whose workload will be increased, having to go back and listen and view and?
That would be up to the individual site and individual instructor, I think. There's no need to unless it's necessary, right? So if a kid comes and says, I did this and they didn't help me, we could go prove that.
Yeah.
But they wouldn't have to go back and check it. I did because I was curious of how the program was going to be, so I went through almost every conversation that our kids had.
Thank you.
Just to kind of see. But there's no need for that to happen on a day-to-day basis. No one needs to do that unless it's necessary.
And you don't know it's necessary until you know there's a need, and the student has to tell you that. I love it. I love education. That's, I know that's a legal thing. I know exactly what you're going to say to that one, so go on.
I'm guessing.
No, I think you're right.
Do you have a question on where she is now?
I believe so.
Okay.
At least there's an access to it.
Go ahead, Trustee Rodriguez.
I'll be honest, when I first saw this, I was very excited. I think this is something that I think will help get us back to the, get us back to basics and, you know, see our extra dollars at work. So this was used at Shaw, is that correct? Piloted there? How successful was it, you know? Please elaborate, like, you implemented this and you saw X minus Z.
I wish we'd had more time with them. We didn't get it till last spring. So the time was limited. But we had over 1,000 individual tutoring sessions with our kids. All of our eighth grade students used it to, for the essay feedbacks or anything, they did anything written. They had to show it to the tutor online before the teacher accepted it. They used it for lit circles in their English classes as well. And that's where we saw the most bang for our buck, was in our English classes with the short period of time we had to implement it because it took away a lot of the time that our teachers do in that initial grading. So they were able to put the rubric up onto the platform that the tutor could then look at when they're giving feedback to each of the written essays. So it saved them a lot of time, so they were able to focus on the final product more often and giving really effective feedback at the class level.
Thank you. Excuse me.
Go ahead, Mr. In.
And Trustee Rodriguez as well. I mean, from a teaching level, that written feedback on writing, that takes a good deal of time. And so when you look at working to increase bandwidth and support our teachers in what they're doing, this was really a valuable service, running the papers through. And then we had a chance to look at all of those papers and the annotated feedback that came back. And it's exceptional feedback. It is very specific to the writing itself. It asks questions, again, around what that thesis statement might be, the opportunity for more supporting details. And so it's really a tremendous service, really particularly around writing.
And I'll tell you another thing that I think, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead.
That I think is, not what we initially looked at this program for, but I think is going to be a benefit moving forward, is there were students that wrote concerning things in some of their work. And that immediately gets flagged by the tutor and sent to me and another designated school, we had a counselor. So it was another safety check, we have Safe Voice, we have those different things for our students, but this is just one more. And we had multiple things like that happen last spring.
Outstanding.
That's great.
That's great that it was intervened. Now, when you implemented this at your school, was this perished the same contract that was signed?
Yes, that's the same contract, all the same obligations, everything's the same in that.
And I mean, I understand, I can see where Vice President Nicolet has concerns. I mean, when I bought my house, there's 47 pages of just Chapter 1, and there's a lot of things in there, you're like, okay, hold on, what? You know, so I mean, but I'm sure that many lawyers, both sides, probably vetted this through over and over again. And I'm really happy, like, again, when I saw this, when I was looking through it, I appreciate your attention to detail, that's impressive. I do see this being a great asset to our students, especially implementing this district-wide, that'd be phenomenal. And I'm glad to hear that there was such positive influence and time management for the teachers as well. So again, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Rodriguez. I see others, but I don't want to stop Trustee Nicolet. So why don't we go back to her? Unless you have something on that last thing she just brought up. It can wait. Okay, we'll do that.
I'm almost there, I promise, I promise.
Go back around, okay.
So that was kind of, that was really, well. What I'm seeing missing that concerns me, I don't see references to parents and families. And it seems to me, no, I know this, that parent-family involvement is key to this. It sounds like the yeoman's work of looking at data and going back and reviewing things is not on the teacher, but on the principal or dean or administrator, whoever is assigned, which I'm really glad about because teachers, if we're going to help teachers, giving them more work to do doesn't help them. And so if, in, and I see it in Schedule A, which is, you don't need to pull it up, JJ, but it's Schedule A, it's called the Customer-Specific Parameters. And this one was for Reynoldsburg. It, and I absolutely think this is marvelous. Number 5 says, "Details of Professional Development and Student Orientations." Paper Education Company will execute professional development and student orientations. They will provide customer support and training throughout the year to the district and its stakeholders. And so I would really like us to add, as a major stakeholder, our parents. You've got teacher help, you have student help, and you have parent help. Because I know that parents can make a huge difference at home in helping Diane with this kind of opportunity. And so that's my last, and that's a heartfelt request.
They were willing to do whatever we need to do with parents. They gave us a lot of information materials. We had student-led conferences about a week after we implemented this. So we had a lot of information there to give them. But they offered to have a parent night. I know they've done services in person before in other districts. So they're very responsive and supportive. And every way that I ever asked a question, they had an answer within a day or two. That was really helpful. So I think that they would respond well to that. I don't know what your guys' conversations have been.
Well, ask the superintendent to weigh in on that as well.
Yes, thank you.
And I'm glad you brought this up. The value of this rests on people knowing about it. And that is on us. We can't rely on paper learning to communicate with our staff, students, and families. That's on us. And so one of the things that we've talked about, and I've talked with Michelle Anderson, is we're going to need a pretty robust communication strategy for this. Because here's the other thing that we haven't talked about that is, I think, another potential added benefit. We have students that go to after-school programs and need help.
Oh, yeah.
Our after-school providers. If a student can log on, they can get tutoring help. So it really does need to be spread far and wide, what is available, what it can do. And so I just wanted to share that as well. So we are talking about making sure that, and, you know, maybe making sure that I talk about it in one of my upcoming family messages and provide some really good information for families, that we provide our schools with information that they can share at evenings where they're having parents come, et cetera, et cetera. But you are spot on, we will make sure that we do that.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
I just want to say, I'm sorry, thank you for all your work on this. And I know I got into the nitty-gritty, and I guess I'm a little embarrassed to say it was kind of fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. Let's talk to Clerk Menedo, and then we'll go to Trustee Church. Maybe if you touch the right button, it looks, good thing you're here, Trustee Rodriguez.
It's one of those days. So I just have some, just, anyway. So the training for the teachers, very simple, very basic, very, this is, so that they don't spend hours and hours and hours and hours and hours.
Yeah, the initial training was 30 minutes.
That's fabulous. And I just have a question. If you said you kind of liked going back and looking at what the kids had done and stuff, how many times did you need to do that because a kid said, I didn't get this?
I never had to do it for a kid saying, there wasn't anybody there to help me, or they gave me the wrong information. The only time that I was drawn to it was when the tutor sent us one of those flags for a student who said something inappropriate or something that was concerning.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Menedo. Trustee Church, and then back to Trustee Rodriguez, and then I see Trustee Mayberry.
Thank you very much. Number one, thank you to Dr. Nicolet for taking this on and looking into that. You caught so much detail, it was incredible. One of those, and just to back up a little bit, for those people that are watching or watching online, I don't know that anybody ever said, this is a tutoring program for the entire district that's available 24/7, 365? Christmas, Thanksgiving, et cetera? And to enable our students to have access to tutors. And what more, I mean, this is just a wonderful, the only question I have was cost, and we pretty well addressed that. And then I want to mention that I recently put together some stats that have just come out on Nevada and as well as the school district. I have that on availability if anybody wants it. But yeah, we haven't done real well as a state or, you know, on some of those things, especially after COVID. So anything for quality of education, this is just awesome. I mean, this is just exactly what I would dream that we would do. And then Dr. Nicolet caught the fact that the data is deleted at the end of the program. And we may want to have our police put out an APB for Mr. Appolito. If anybody has seen him, he's probably up in Tahoe where he lives. But those of us that know, that's an issue that's near and dear to his heart. So that's wonderful that that's in the contract. And then finally, I'm assuming through legal, we talked about if kids call in and they, if this becomes a persistent issue, we can fail to pay it, or we can say duty, you didn't do a duty to perform, and we're going to cancel the contract, is that correct?
Yes, we have very favorable termination provisions in the contract. That's another reason we have the amendment to the contract, so we can have those provisions that are favorable to the district.
All right. And finally, for anybody looking in, this is three years. It's not one year, what, 2.2 million or what? It's a three-year contract, so, two-year contract. So at least it's spread out over two years, not one year. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Church. We're going to go Trustee Mayberry just before we circle back, okay? Trustee Mayberry?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, gentlemen. I don't want to be too redundant, but yeah, similar to Trustee Rodriguez, I was ecstatic when I saw this agenda item. I absolutely support it. I've talked a lot in the community about how important it is that we improve access to tutors to our students, not only as a result of lost learning due to COVID, but just that every child learns at a different pace. And I can tell you, as a parent, I can't, for the life of me, provide assistance when it comes to math to my children. In fact, I have tutors that come to my home. And, you know, it's not always, it's not always cheap. And there are families that don't have the means to do that at all. So I'm blessed in many respects. But this online tutoring is, I think, exactly what we need. I'm absolutely delighted and ecstatic that we're doing this. I think it's the right thing to do. Anything, you know, I think that, you know, one of our mantras ought to be, whatever it takes. And this is, this is all about that, whatever it takes, to improve academic performance for our students. I have a couple of quick questions for you, just for those that aren't in the field like me. Can you tell us a little bit about what's the term? And I may mispronounce this, I apologize. Socratic teaching. Am I saying that right? Socrates training?
Socratic, yeah. That's, yeah, that's where it's coming from.
As mentioned many times.
It's basically just continuing to ask questions to lead to the answer.
Okay.
So if I say, what's 3X plus Y, have you done this before? What did you do last time? Like, have you ever talked about variables and those kinds of things? Just keep asking questions until the student can come up with something that might be leading them towards the right answer and then asking follow-up questions.
Got it. And can you tell us the subjects that are provided on this platform?
I don't have the full list in front of me, but it's pretty much everything that we do. It's very extensive, lots of AP subjects, all the basic core subjects. I was just talking with Mr. Ernst about this the other day. A student can upload a practiced ACT test and get feedback on answers with that, work through a tutor with that. So really, they can do pretty much anything, and they're always adding things.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted that for the record for our folks listening at home. I know it's pretty broad-based, so thank you for that. And I think that's my comments again. Really, really pleased to see this before us, and thank you. And yeah, nothing to take away from Dr. Vice President Nicolet. I appreciate her concerns and her questions as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Mayberry. Trustee Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President, and good questions, Trustee Mayberry. My last question, and then I'd like to make a motion. Last question, so this can be accessed on iPad or tablet or Android, Apple? Yeah, awesome. Phenomenal.
Yeah, really, any platform.
Madam President.
Awesome. Just before you do, though, Madam Superintendent, this is intentional, so.
Well, we actually have a real customer sitting in our midst in Ivy, and I would love just your thoughts on this as a high school student and what you see the potential, either both value or concerns or questions.
I think it's going to be a fabulous program. I mean, there's been a lot of students who have been struggling all along, but especially within the last few years. I even served as a tutor in the area for Reno Alliance of Free Tutoring. And there was a lot of kids who didn't have access to tutoring during that time, and it's really important to be able to provide that for them. So I think it's incredible that the district is going to provide this for the students. I also think, I'm fortunate enough to have my own tutor up in Incline, and a lot of students don't have access, and I feel very fortunate to have that. Also, I mean, Incline's a small community, but there's only so many tutors you can have and so many different time slots you can have. So I think, I mean, for the whole district and even Incline kids, it's going to be, the whole timing thing and being able to access it whenever is going to help a lot of students. Because, I mean, even with my tutor this year, I was, I emailed her in July and said, I want you to tutor me in AP Calculus this year. Can I get in your schedule now so I can select my timing? Because I knew if I waited, I was going to have to go around board meetings and go around different activities that were going on. And so I think this being able to be accessible to everybody is going to help a lot of students and definitely make them succeed more in school. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Great to hear from our student. I would just add, so many things have been said that I think we all are in agreement that anything that we can do to help our students. One of the things I like about, like the most about this is, everybody can access it. Everyone can afford a tutor, people work different hours, much like you mentioned. People have, you know, weird subjects sometimes that they need tutoring in, they may not be that popular. But this covers the gamut of that. That's the thing I like really the most about this, is that, obviously, the idea behind providing the tutoring is awesome, but that every student, every student that has a device of any kind can get this kind of help, this individualized help, and the Spanish piece of it. That's what I mean by every student. And so there, I mean, it's just, it's almost like there's no reason not to do this. And the information around it would be really, really, really important to let families know, let students know, there's some help for you. There's some help for you, so. Let's go public comment before we deal with the motion. Do we have any public comment on this?
No.
Okay, thank you, JJ. Trustee Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the agenda item 2.14. I second that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, there's a second. Is there further discussion? Okay, none. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Okay, the motion is carried, let the record show it, it's 6 to 0. Thank you, thank you, thank you, a lot of work. Principal Gifford, thank you for being the pilot on this. It really, well, it really helped to get your perspective on how it really worked in the classroom, so, in the school, in the buildings, I should say. So, thank you. Okay, so that is complete our consent agenda. That was just great work to be able to offer that to our, for our students. Just amazing work. Very exciting, exactly. What's going to really be exciting, when we get a chance to get a report on how many students are using it and get some feedback from the students, that's what I was just saying, to hear from the students and the families that may be involved. Okay, so let's go to Agenda Item 3.01. 3.01, this is Presentation to Update the Board of Trustees on the Critical Labor Shortage in the Transportation Department to Include Information on Employee Recruitment and Operational Planning Efforts. This is for information and for discussion only. And just before we jump into this, one thing I will say is that in terms of recruitment, I know it's transportation and others, if there is not a public fair carnival celebration that I'm at, that I have not seen Emily and her team or her team of Washoe County School District table. I mean, places like, I wouldn't even think a table would be there. And every time I go up and talk to them, hey, how's it going? Oh, we got some good people to sign up, we have some names, we have some leads. So just kudos for that work, which I'm sure we're going to, we'll hear some information on how it's working with transportation. But it's having an impact across the board, because I, I mean, I see them everywhere, just absolutely everywhere, so. Please, go ahead, Mr. Cersei, COO.
I appreciate that lead. Good afternoon, everyone. Adam Cersei, for the record, Chief of Operations. So this is a brief informational update item. But as President Taylor led in, we have seen very favorable progress over the last several months. So this topic, as everyone is painfully aware, has been an ongoing issue throughout this calendar year and before. Extensive effort on the part of the trustees, as well as many staff across the school district, led to some painful decisions to ultimately increase compensation at the cost of reducing chronically unfilled full-time positions and staffing level reductions. That went into effect July 1st, and since then, That went into effect July 1. And since then, I'm extremely pleased to announce we've seen across the board a marked reversal of fortunes with regards to retention, as well as new hire and onboarding. This is targeted towards transportation, but that trend, as a general statement, has been seen very consistently, in particular across nutrition services and housekeeping custodial staff. So, very positive there. All-time high retention levels over the summer months, where we often see a lot of attrition, and really doubling or better rate or total number of applications during this period of time as compared to last year. Very, very positive. However, you know, this is not necessarily an entirely celebratory update, you know. A lot of difficult choices led to this reversal of fortune. The deficit became severe. We have reversed that trend, but we do have quite a bit of effort that must continue. So that's kind of just the overall. But very specifically, wanted to get to the punchline a little quicker on this one. This slide is familiar to the trustees. You've seen this on several presentations. However, specifically, the second, or pardon me, the, the last two bullets have been updated with a lot of the hard work, the pace to hire these individuals and train them. Many of the transport state, the, the hard work of the transportation staff and many, many applicants have put us on a pace to achieve approximately 220 or better daily drivers by the week of October 10. So the week of October 10 is our first day back after fall break. And because of that progress, we're able to confidently announce that with the help of some of our other full-time transportation staff to, to bridge potential gaps, mechanics, dispatchers, for a period of time, we can confidently announce that the area rotation plan will end across the district. And as of October 10, the school district will return to full daily hub transportation service thereafter.
I was going to say, we got applause and celebration, yes.
It's been a team effort, a lot of hard work, and much more work to be done. A little bit on the interim, thank you for that. We have also been striving every week to enhance and preserve daily transportation whenever possible. So the last time I was before you talking about this, we were pushed to explore every possible means that includes options such as charter schools, individual, or pardon me, charter buses, outsourcing of transportation services in some form or fashion. And we've seen positive impacts there. But most notably, as we have onboarded these new applicants and actually licensed them, we've been able to restore at least 28 individual routes through, you know, every time someone gets licensed to go behind the wheel, putting them into service and putting them into service at targeted routes with data-driven, needs-based prioritization. Also noteworthy, we've seen a favorable response from our community with regards to the mileage reimbursement program, a fairly innovative tool or, a tool that's been used in different format. An average of 400 individuals per week applying for and availing themselves of that opportunity, ultimately in the interest of getting those kids to school. So, you know, again, while this period has been extremely trying, I don't want to minimize that, there have been some small victories over the last several, or first few weeks of school. So kind of to reiterate, we, we mentioned the ongoing training program. Today, we have 38 future daily drivers in some stage of training. That's a, that's a lot. That's, that's a really significant number. These are staff, these are staff. These are folks who have been, you know, vetted and hired and are being paid during this training process, but must work through this commercial driver's license training to get behind the wheel. So each week, as I just mentioned, they will graduate essentially, become fully signed off and trained, and will be put onto route. So that process, that practice, will continue for the next several weeks as we work to utilize as many, every resource that we have available to us during these last few weeks of the area rotation plan. So just in conclusion, there remain, in addition to those 38 that have been hired and are in some stage of the training process, we have beyond that 20 open driver allocations remaining at the school district. So the work remains, absolutely. While we have seen a reversal of this trend and continue to receive more applicants than resignations, we, we really are striving for those full staffing levels to provide the greatest level of service possible. To your point, Trustee Taylor, we have a career fair, I believe, at the New Hug High School just this coming weekend. So it's kind of a double whammy of fun, all, all the fun that the career fair brings and new high school as a backdrop. But there are, will be transportation opportunities there, as well as the full spectrum of school district hiring opportunities at that event. And we want, just really want to close with an emphasis that we do have more work to be done, not only to continue to restore and improve our level of service, really to ensure that we're never in this situation again. I think there are many of painful lessons learned throughout this process. Our job is to make sure that we, we truly leverage those experiences and, and grow stronger from them. And that work has already begun. We'll be working with the superintendent and all staff members to make recommendations or implement opportunities for efficiency and improved level of service going forward. So I really want to emphasize that because this, this has been quite the saga, and it's, it's not over yet. Our continuous improvement will remain. But that milestone of restoring daily transportation service throughout the district will be reached following the conclusion of fall break. So that's the update. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cersei. Before I comment, I'll turn it over to our Superintendent, Dr. Enfield.
Thank you, Mr. Cersei. Before we open it up to the trustees, I want to thank Mr. Cersei. But can we please give a resounding thanks to Mr. Scott Lee, who has done yeoman's work leading this?
Yes.
And has done so under tremendous pressure with just an incredible sense of professionalism and grace. We're deeply grateful to you, Scott, and congratulations on the progress under your leadership that we've made. Work left to do, but progress nonetheless. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Well, I'll bring here to the, to the table. I'll, I'll begin on, and this one, this is one of those that was really near and dear to me, as, as you know. And I want to first just say thank you for the hard work. And you're right, we pushed some last board meeting. I know I did. And I know our colleagues did as well, because we all have, have a, have a concern about this. So the work, when the way that you took that and said, okay, let's just go deeper. And you did that and made some things happen. I really appreciate that. I think we all do, and the families do. Mr. Lee, the way that you, you dealt with when school starts, there are always a lot of emails that come our way as trustees, and they, which means they end up really going your way from us as trustees. And the way you responded, and really were in a, in a polite way, in a how can I help way, taking situations individually, I really want, appreciate that as well. And, and I'm really mindful of the number that you said, 28 additional routes were added, because in some cases, there's some things that just needed. It's like, it looks one way on paper, but then when it's in practice, it's like, oh, you know what? Shoot, we may have missed this one. And I think that really shows, what was Pete's word, an ability to be nimble, right? To be, to be, to be nimble in that and take a look and say, okay, maybe we should adjust some things, and so on. So for all the hard work, for all the innovative ideas, for all the, the stress and the gray hairs, I'm sure we add it to all of you. Just thank you. Thank you really on behalf of those families who are now having transportation services, and then on behalf of all of them who will get back to full board school every single day on October 10. I know we all believe that's the way it should be. Right, that's the way. So thank you. Really want to thank both of you for that. Other comments, colleagues? Go ahead, lead with your trustee church, and then trustee Rodriguez.
Thank you. Yeah, excellent job. Obviously, there's room to be done, but, but very, very impressive. And that second page, I thought that was the weather map at first. So I had to figure that out with all the red blobs and green blobs on there. And I continue to push for innovative ideas. I think money's part of the answer, but not the only answer. So, and I've reached out before and suggested that maybe UNR or some other university, like those rebels down south, there might be students working on their PhD or masters that could even help research and come up with innovative ideas on recruiting. But overall, just wonderful, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Church. Trustee Rodriguez?
Yeah, I just want to reemphasize that. That's the one thing I do here, as President Taylor mentioned. All the things I hear from our neighbors is buses. That's the first thing that comes up. And I really appreciate you guys, everything that you guys have done to make this achievable. So I'm really looking forward to October 10. Thank you guys again.
Absolutely. Okay, this is not an action item, so there's no public comment for this. So we just appreciate it. Thank you very much. All right, I know how that's just, it's good to get, it's good to get good news. Okay, on to Agenda Item 3.02. Presentation, Discussion, and Possible Action to Consider Approval of Naming, of the naming, naming the soon-to-be-renovated athletic field, soon-to-be-renovated athletic field at Incline High School, the Ridge Line Stadium, the Ridge Line Stadium, and naming the building expansion at Incline High School, the Duffield Student Center in honor of the commitment to the school by the Duffield Foundation. This is for possible action. This is an exciting item. That's here before us, a couple of different parts who will be very, very exciting. So, Dr. Paul, turn it over to you. He's the man. All right.
Yes. Good afternoon, President Taylor, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Enfield. Mike Paul, Area 3 Superintendent, to present today. Principal Kay Hill was going to be, Incline High School was going to be co-presenter today, but she was called out of town on unexpected circumstances today. So Teresa Golden from Capital Projects is here with me today, a very suitable and great replacement today. So thank you, Teresa. So we are, I am here today to talk about the expansion that was previously brought to the board in our first discussion about this back at June 14. So at the June 14 board meeting, the board, all of you, was given preliminary, was given approval to obtain collaborative design studios for architectural services to begin work at Incline High School related to the construction of a new athletic field stadium or track, and also the expansion to the existing school building for a comprehensive student center, hosting an exciting aspects of all kinds of aspects for that expansion of the student building that will greatly enhance the experience of our students at Incline High. So what we're here today for is to honor and the Dave and Duffield, the Dave and Cheryl Duffield Foundation for their continued generosity in all of the work that they do in Incline and elsewhere in our community. For, we know that they are entirely funding this project at Incline to the tune of approximately $38 million for, for this work that they're doing for us. So today, we're here to ask the Board of Trustees to honor their foundation by naming the, the student center or the expansion of the building, the Dave, the, the Duffield Student Center, and then also the expansion, the rebuilding of the track facility and the student, the athletic facility, the Ridge Line Stadium, are the two names there. And then also, in addition to the naming of these two facilities for this expansion, it's also requested that the Dave and Cheryl Duffield Foundation have the option to remove or change the signs, plaques, names, et cetera, associated with these two parts of this project until the year 2030 at the expense of the foundation. And so those are the two proposals that we would like to put, the naming of these two aspects of the project, and then also allowing them the rights to rename and these two parts of the project at, you know, should they choose to through the year 2030.
And that, that would mean to replace the signage.
And then they would, they would replace.
They can do that at their expense. They can replace the signage that really accompanies these, would certainly make sense if you're going to change the name. So.
Yes.
Trustee Church?
Thank you. Yeah, that's my district. And now I notice there's no board reports, but I want to be specific. We're not discussing the project. This is strictly an agenda item.
It's just the naming.
To approve the naming. And just for the record, the, the Duffields have approved the, the names.
Yes. This came from them, and it went through them to approve this before bringing it to you. Yes.
Okay. And yeah, so I think it's just wonderful. Just thank you. I want to clarify that.
Yeah, very generous. I mean, they've been very generous. We were there, we were there for the, the theater when the, when the Duffield Foundation redid the theater, which is just absolutely beautiful for the ribbon cutting for that. It was just their generosity. It's just, just awesome for that community. Our student trustee, who's a student at trust, at Incline High School, may have a thing or two to say about this.
Yeah, I would just like to say, I, I've been very thankful to that foundation for a long time. They even funded the elementary through middle school I went to. I've, I've met them a few times, and they're just, I'm so thankful. And the rest of the students at Incline are very thankful that this is occurring. I'm sad to be missing it since I'm senior, but I'm very happy that it's going to be there for years to come. And yeah, I mean, 70% of our students at Incline are athletes. So it's going to be, and the student center, we're already preparing it for, to be like huge projects. And anyway, there's a lot of ideas that are already occurring, and everybody's very excited about it. So thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else? I remember this is, we, we already approved, it already came before the board, came through Capital Funding Protection Committee. It was already approved, and then gave them the opportunity to go forward, and then, that we gave them the naming rights and approval. And this is, these are the names that they recommend. So.
Yes.
Trustee Church?
I'd love to make a motion.
I bet you would. Oh, I'm sorry. Wait, wait, public comment. Sorry, sorry, sir. Any public comment on this? No, thank you. I'm sorry, we got, I got a little excited.
Good catch.
Yeah, you usually catch me on that, too. You are excited.
I move that the Board of Trustees approves the, the naming of the to-be-renovated athletic field at Incline High School to Ridge Line Stadium, the building expansion at Incline High School as the Duffield Student Center, and the ability of the Dave and Cheryl Duffield Foundation to remove or change the signs, plaques, names, et cetera, until 2023 at the expense of the, there's a typo on here, Dave and Cheryl Duffield Foundation.
And I will second that on behalf of myself, Diane, and Ivy.
It's your district, too. You were going to say, go ahead.
It's, it's until 2030.
Oh, that's right, 2030. Yeah, 2020. I mean, they only have one year to do it. So it's till 2030.
Yeah, that's two typos, yes. I'll amend that till 2030.
Yes, it's 2030. Yes, good catch. Okay. Any further discussion on this? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? All right, the motion carries. At the record show, it is unanimous. I am so excited for the Highlanders. They've wanted, they've needed to redo the building, and they've wanted the new stadium for a long, long time. So this gives them that. So fantastic. Absolutely fantastic. Thank you so much.
Awesome.
All right, yeah, a lot of good, when it's good stuff, you got to love it when it's good stuff. All right. All right, so we're on to our, our reports. We always, I like to go to student reports first, since you're here, and we know, although it's early enough, you have plenty of time to drive home. But still, let's go ahead and go, start with you.
Well, thank you, President Taylor. So.
Oh, oh, mic's off. There we go.
Next week is our first Student Advisory Council meeting.
Yay.
And so we have a full established council back. We're going to be starting to engage in multiple projects, trying to get a full committed council together. And so we can institute that program back up. It kind of died over COVID. So we're really happy to be able to see a lot of students, get a lot of new ideas and positions on different things that are happening in the district. And so, yeah, that's basically what we are very, very thankful for right now. So I'll let you know how that plays out. Dr. Enfield, it looks like she'll be at a lot of the meetings. And yeah, so thank you so much.
All right, fantastic. And then we will, let's see, trustee Smith isn't here, so you don't have to worry about following her. So why don't we, we'll just start with trustee church, and we'll go the, we'll go this way so we can, we'll give Jill this time to be right there. Trustee Church, please, sir.
Thank you very much. Yeah, it's been a very, very busy week or so, couple of weeks. The biggest thing I did was attend the Nevada Association of School Board Conference in Las Vegas, and a lot of innovative ideas were discussed. I, I will say, and I don't think there's anything confidential there, that many of the folks there talked about more funding, which can translate to no taxes, or more taxes. I'm the, perhaps maybe the lone, but I'm the no vote on no taxes in general. And if they were to do it, what I've said to them is, you better tell me what it's for, when it sunsets, and who oversees it. But I think we need to look at other funding sources first. But that was a very good meeting, and at least we got to discuss that, as well as many other issues. I also got to San Diego, but I still worked on a lot of things. Attended a couple Padre games, which, you know, sports is actually part of education. So, so I've got a little nexus there. Attended with many others, the Town Hall with Dr. Enfield, and that was very well received. We did hear a lot of people concerned about transportation. So you can see that we're on it. I also had a meeting with a group from the state on grants, and I passed some of that on to Dr. Enfield. But hopefully, we're going to look at all the grants that are out there and make full use of, of any grants that are available so we don't miss any. And that has happened a couple of years ago in the past, where we missed some, we probably should have applied for. And then also, very importantly, I took a tour with Dr. Enfield and Mr. Cersei of some of our property. He brought a child seat, but I didn't need it in the back, so I was okay. But we did tour a lot of the vacant properties that might be available to the school district, either owned by the district or the federal government. But that was a great tour, and we got a good chance to talk as we were driving. And I don't know if it's up there, J. Joe, I sent JJ pictures too late, of the Jay Raw Wood School.
Jay Wood Raw.
Jay Wood Raw.
Jay Wood Raw, yeah.
I messed that up.
That's the best name ever.
Yes, it is.
I messed it up. But it's up to three stories. It's, I mean, it's up. You got to go by there and look at it. I had. and look at it, I had pictures, but again, I, it was my, my bad for not sending that in sooner, but it's very, very impressive, the elementary school that's going to relieve overcrowding in the Damone Ranch area, so that's basically, I'm probably forgetting something, but did I mention that my Padre, I taught two Padre games?
Yeah, thank you, trustee Church, your time is up, your time, no, okay. Thank you, trustee Rodriguez.
Uh, thank you, Madam President, uh, yeah, these last few weeks, trustee Mayberry and I were just touched at the hip, we did attend a educators' family event, that was pretty awesome, got to see the educators and their families as well, and just get a really good chance just to thank them all for everything that they're going, been through, so that was really awesome, and we were invited to that, so that was really nice. We also attended the City of Sparks, the Proud Community Event, which was at our New Hug High School, I wish I would have saw Adam there, seriously, you know, Lord of the Hill, no, recruiters out there, but it was really awesome, we got to meet with the city council members, and city officials, and just like the department heads, so that was really nice, be able to see them at our school, and just kind of bring that community together. Um, and just today, you know, Adam Mayberry and I, we attended, or we stopped by, we just stopped by to see our bus drivers in training, dropped off some Doughboy Donuts, not Krispy Kreme, not Dunkin' Donuts, it was Doughboys, so just, really just got to go there and just show our appreciation to them, and just everything that they're going, been through, and just really emphasize how valued of team members they are for our district, and just continue to, just continue to be with my neighbors, and kind of get a feeling to pulse for the community right now, and just really emphasize that a lot of positive changes have occurred, and will continue to occur, and just continue to be an advocate for our district with our local elected officials, and also our tribal community as well, so, yeah, get in the ground.
Awesome, awesome. All right, thank you, trustee Rodriguez, clerk Manetto.
Thank you, Madam President, well, I went to the first day of school at Agnes Rizley with several other people, where it was a work in progress, but the kids were thrilled to be there, their faces just glowed. And then I visited Desert Skies Middle School, where I got to see some of the kids I taught just four and a half years ago, and that's always fun, they looked at me shockingly. Oh, and I'm going to come back to that one, and, come on, come on, I went to Palmer, where I got to see people I taught in kindergarten, too, went to a receptionist for a, for our new superintendent, I went to Sparks Middle School, what a delightful school, and then I visited Agnes Rizley again, but it was really interesting, because that first day of school, it was, wow, and then, just a, what, a week and a half later, the air conditioning was working, it was great, it was fabulous, and that's all I know, except I visited Esther Bennett, where, here it is, I wish we could make it bigger, okay, so what happens is that they had kids who were graduating, who went to Esther Bennett, who, where do I, where do I point it? Oh, wow.
Use this, oh.
Okay. What am I doing?
Let me see though.
Okay, just, just, it's, anyway, these seniors-
You trying to advance the slides?
Oh, oh, look at, whatever.
You can't make it bigger with this.
Okay.
J.J. can advance over there.
Okay, and she can just go through, whatever, ooh, that's exciting, anyway, what happened is this, my clock is ticking, so here they are, these children called Principal Reyes, who's been there for a lot of years, and said, can we come back to our elementary school, we want to come back to our elementary school?
That's cool.
And she said, well, yes, so they came from mostly Spanish Springs, but other schools too, and they, look at this, look at this, they came, and those little kids, I'm going to cry, got to see these big grown-up kids in their caps and gowns, and the inspiration, and then the kids seeing their old teachers, you know, and the hugs and the kisses, and there's our beautiful prince, princes, principal, and the delightful graduates, and here's where they were looking for their name, everybody had signed their name on this picture, and it just, it was one of those things I told her, next year, I want to be there, I want to be there, it's, yeah, there it is, thank you.
Thank you, clerk Manetto.
There it is.
All right, Dr. Nicolet.
There it is. Okay. All right. Once again, I've had more fun than a person than I probably deserve, I've visited nine schools, and I have had the pleasure of talking with principals, assistant principals and deans at those schools, and I can tell you without doubt, fabulous things are going on, they always have ideas for improvement, it's constant, they're, they're never, okay, we've arrived, we're done, they're always looking to the future, and, and what they can improve, and what their students and families and employees need, and I will say this, that when I was at Lenz Elementary School with Dave Keller and Dean Nina Walker, I, I heard a term that I thought I understood, but I don't really, and I had to look it up, and I heard it later on during the week again, so I knew I had to figure it out, and the word is code switcher, and Principal Dave Keller called Dean Nina Walker, code switcher extraordinaire, so rather than just have it off the top, I'm going to read to you what that means. It is the practice of alternating between two or more languages, or varieties of languages or dialects, in conversation within a single conversation. The intent is to solicit an understanding of what a student is saying, they may be using words, they may be using English and another language, sometimes Spanish, other languages, and so as a teacher, you have to kind of interpret and bring them along with what they're trying to say, so there's techniques for doing that, so that the child, the end result is the child feels and knows that they've been heard and understood, and that, of course, moves the relationship forward to a wonderful place, and so, Principal Dave Keller at Lenz Elementary called his dean Nina Walker, code switcher extraordinaire, which is, I'm guessing, certainly high praise. I visited the bus yard, and I asked Scott Lee for some statistics that I could share with you, Washoe County School District maintains 370 school buses, and typically, when they're not in the rotation, there are over 18,000 students daily that are transported, there's over 1,400 runs per day, and that, and there's combinations of a bus might do one, depending on what they're doing, or eight, depending on what they're doing, and I asked him for a fun fact, and he shared with me that last fiscal year, our fleet maintenance technicians replaced 258 tires on the school buses. Last thing is I served on a Family and Consumer Sciences State of Nevada Content Standards Writing Team, teachers from around Nevada, they've got extraordinary things going on in CTE.
Thank you, Dr. Nicolet, trustee Mayberry.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President, I've been wearing some busy hats, so haven't had as much time as on our, on our schools, I look forward to doing that here in the, in the weeks to come, but I did have an opportunity to attend the first day of school for Veterans Memorial after a two-week delay, they're one of the schools that, they run a two-week delay, and they had some capital improvement projects there, I think particularly some seismic retrofits, and maybe some HVAC work done, so very positive, appreciate the opportunity that Edom put on for the new superintendent as well, it's very well received, great reception, introduced our new superintendent to the business community, and so I just want to take a few times, celebrate, thank some of our unsung heroes in the, in the district, probably deserve more recognition than they get at times, and think, somebody alluded to the fact that our procurement team won the award for the excellent, National Procurement Institute, that annual achievement of excellence in procurement award honors the innovation, professionalism, productivity, and leadership, Washoe County School District is one of 171 agencies in the United States and Canada, and only one of 17 school districts to receive that award, so congratulations. I also want to thank Emily Ellison and her team as well, I had this in my report, Madam President, you alluded to it, every fair, every event I go to, they're there, so they're leaving no stone unturned, it doesn't go unnoticed from this trustee and obviously others, also want to thank our facility staff for their hard work during the heat wave, I know there were some challenges with, with some of our schools cooling down a bit, so thank you for getting on that and taking care of our students. And also want to acknowledge our superintendent, the work she's doing, the meeting members of our community, and, and the superintendent and the brand leader, and the BLT for streamlining our meetings, if you haven't noticed, some of our meetings, our board meetings are getting a little bit shorter, I appreciate that, it saves taxpayer dollars, it allows our, our staff to get home and spend time with their families, so I think, I think that's a real blessing, and I hope we continue to go down that path, there's really no need to have eight-hour meetings, frankly. And finally, I want to acknowledge a tie that trustee Manetto provided to me, it's a, it's a green tie, I was, a little back end of that, I was chastised for, for not wearing any green at the Hug High groundbreaking, because I didn't have any green, and so now I have green, so, thank you, yeah, yeah, thank you very much, it's, that'll be a nice addition to my wardrobe, thank you. Thank you all very much, and thank you, Ivy.
All right, thank you, trustee Mayberry, and thanks to the colleagues for all the work out there in the community, I mean, it's, I think it's really appreciated when people see us out and about doing the things that we do, I spent most of these la, actually, every one of these last three weeks, I'm like trustee Mayberry in this regard, I actually got a chance to work, I was out of town four days each of the last three weeks, so, getting some things done, because we didn't have, we had five Tuesdays, so we had a little bit of a break, so, but even in the midst of that, in those days I was here, it was important to still get some things done, get some things done, you alluded to the Edom welcome reception, very well attended, thank you to Mike Katsmierski, and the business community for the warm reception, and really the positive words about the work that you're doing, and their continued commitment to, to public education, I think that's critically important, when it's a public show like that, it really does make a difference, and we had really good hors d'oeuvres, too, by the way, and just, just thought I'd share that, and I got a chance to meet the superintendent's husband, so that was, so, so that was good for those of us who, who were there, I won't say that one on the mic, so I'll let that go, okay. Also, I met with a new, although he isn't new anymore, Mr. Evans is here, Kalen, he and I had a chance to have our, have our first official meeting, him as the, the president of WEA to talk about some things that are on their mind, that are, that's important to them as teachers, and how we can work together as teachers and as a board to just make things better for teachers, and I think, I think we all think that's a good, that's a good idea, how do we support them, also had some statewide conversations with some state, a coalition of statewide administrators, some conversations with them, what are those things that are important to administrators, because they don't get as much notice, if you will, we speak a lot about our teachers, which are critically important, but admins have their own issues as well, so I learned some things from that conversation, so that was really good. I, the last thing I want to talk about is, I went to, I attended an event, even though it was a great event, it's not really the event in and of itself, but it was, it was an event, I was a part of a program for cancer survivors, breast cancer survivors, and then it's really been expanded to cancer survivors, and the thing about this event that I just wanted to share with the board is, is one of, one of our own teachers, Jaclyn Jones from Spanish Springs High School, was a teacher, and she's had a very public fight with, with cancer, and she lost her battle earlier in the year, she had a very public fight, but they really took a moment to really just acknowledge her and her fight, she was really important to the Spanish Springs community, Spanish Springs High School community, she attended some graduations, the graduation for Spanish Springs, and thank you to Michelle Anderson, her staff who made it so she could be there, and be on the stage, and participate, and got a chance to hug some of her athletes, it was really, really emotional, just reminds, reminded me of just how important she is, and just how important our teachers are. She was a standout softball player at Worcester High School, during her fight, the community raised thousands of dollars for the support of cancer patients in our, in our area earlier this year, the Spanish Springs High School softball team dedicated their dugout to her, so just to see that she, and even though she's no longer with us, the continual impact that she has on that community, and on our community as a whole, just reminds me of how important our teachers are, the, the impact that they have on the lives of the students and even their families, so it made me, of course, it's a sad moment, but it was really a tribute to her, and the contribution that she made, so, just, just a reminder, that we appreciate her teachers and what you do. So that's it for me, Melon Superintendent? No, no, Ivy went first.
You were here.
Yeah, yeah, you were here.
Well, sorry, but I'm looking, I'm looking at here, and it says it's after, and I'm like-
I always let the student go first.
Well, that's what I thought, but that's why I was confused. I am here, Superintendent Enfield, present, thank you, despite the last comment, apologies, just wanted to make sure we heard from Ivy, very important.
Yes, it is.
Thank you, Madam President, and apologies, so I just want to begin by acknowledging our team that has been working diligently over the last several days to be on top of the smoke issue that we've been facing, and I know, and I've received, you know, emails of concern from many families, students and others, and Mr. Cersei and others have been very helpful in responding and letting them know that we are monitoring this really constantly, including being up and ready at about 4:00 a.m. to begin the chat, to determine what it is that we're looking at, and so I'm grateful to the team for that, and we will continue to make sure that we are putting the safety of our students and staff first, as we always do. I, it's been a busy few weeks, and so now that the school year is up and running, so far, I've been able to visit 32 schools, which has been absolutely joyous, and very instructional, I'm learning a lot about what the, of the great work happening, and of the needs that our students and staff have, and how we as a district can better support them, but I wanted to just say thank you to all of our, our principals and staff in our buildings, it's really been a delight, I've also been trying to attend as many football games as I can, which means that I'm not able to attend a full game, because oftentimes I'm doing a doubleheader, I know that's a baseball term, trustee Church, but I'm applying it to football, so, doing doubleheaders to try to get to two games in, in one night, and that has been really, really fun, and a great way to see all of the wonderful school spirit that our students, staff, and families and alumni have for their schools, so, and I want to thank our staff at the schools that have gifted me with some wonderful school spiritware that I'm accumulating quite the collection now, yes, 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 there have been some challenging car changes in between games on those Friday evenings, wearing one shirt to the first game, and then having to change in the car to get into the other shirt, so, you know, it's an adventure, and I love it. I will be, as trustee Church noted, held our first Town Hall meeting recently, which was very well attended, I want to thank everyone who took the time to attend and share their questions, their concerns, their ideas, our next Town Hall meeting is scheduled for the 22nd at Desert Skies Middle School, so I look forward to seeing people there, and you can go on our website and look at upcoming dates for not just our Town Halls, but our coffee chats, we're trying to provide a range of opportunities for families, staff, others, community to just come and engage, so some in the morning, some in the evening, knowing that, that people have busy schedules. Next week, I will also be launching Soup with the Soup, and this is going to be at Dilworth Middle School, where I'll go and sit in the lunchroom till last person standing, you know, many of these schools have multiple lunches, so lunch is a rolling adventure, and it's really just an informal opportunity, it's something that I've done since I've been a superintendent, to provide a little soup as a thank you to our staff, and then just to listen, informal conversation, what's on their mind, what do they want me as the superintendent to know, and I always find it incredibly illuminating, I will tell you that I also combine those days with visits to classrooms, of course, but then also a student-focused group, I ask them to provide me with a group of students that I can sit down and ask them what their school experience is, and what we can do better. I also had last week my first Lunch and Learn, so these are opportunities to meet with central office teams, and we kicked it off with HR, because they've really been working hard, and was able to really have some great conversation around not just the good work they're doing, but the work they'd like to be doing, and some great ideas and takeaways for me, and thanks to Mike Paul's very talented wife, we had wonderful cookies made for them that had things like HR rocks, and, you know, all kinds of fun things, just as a little thank you for the hard work they're doing. And then later this month, I will have my first soup session, that's where I'll be meeting in, with small groups of principals, again, same thing- Again, same thing, just really trying to get to know them, hearing what's on their mind, what they want me to know. And also, as I named as a priority in my intro, building relationships. It's really about getting out there and not just listening and learning, but building relationships with folks, and I've been enjoying that. And then on the, um, work-work front, uh, executive leadership team and I, um, had a very good meeting yesterday. And as the trustees know, I have made a very public pledge that we will be in a very different place next fall when it comes to staffing and transportation. And I think that we are all heartened to see the progress that our transportation team is making and that we're already down that road. And there is work to do to ensure that we are in a much more secure, uh, much more secure footing moving forward. So, um, sort of end of October, early November, I've asked our team, uh, and our, our ELT members to come back with what the sort of backwards mapping, if you will, what, what do we need to do between now and next fall to be ready for next fall when it comes to transportation, when it comes to staffing? We're also looking at student achievement. We have some very concerning disparities, uh, between groups of students that we need to look at and have a plan for. And also, um, what will our assessment system look like? How are we going to build an assessment system that is truly useful for our teachers, students and families? And also allows us to measure growth? Because I know that the one piece of information that many in the community point to is our end-of-year assessment. That's an important data point, I'm not disputing that. It is one data point, a snapshot of a moment in time of what our student could do that day. I also, in addition to that, want us to be able to tell a story around our students entered at this rate, or at this stage in their, you know, the first few weeks of school, and they ended the year here. So that our students who perhaps come to us, um, not quite at grade level, um, and likely won't do well on that end of course grade level, or end of year grade level assessment, but thanks to the brilliance of their, of our teaching staff, our counselors, our principals, our community, everybody, they could make two years' worth of growth in that year. We need to acknowledge that, build upon that and celebrate that, because that's how we're going to eliminate those disparities that, um, are existing between students. So we are actively working on those plans and will, um, obviously keep the trustees and the public updated. But I am grateful to the team for rising to the challenge or challenges that I, um, lovingly bring to them on a regular basis. Uh, you know, as, as people, uh, I think if some of you know, I, I talk fast, I move fast, and, uh, I have been criticized in the past for going too quickly. And my response is, I'm only going as fast as our students need me to do, which means I'm never going fast enough. Um, and so, uh, we will continue at this, um, intentional but aggressive pace to make sure that we are, as a system, moving forward together in service of our students and our families. And I will just end with, um, I, I could not be prouder or happier to be living in this community and serving this community as your superintendent. It is a joy. It is an absolute joy. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Enfield, and thank you for doing all the work that you're doing to build the relationships internally as well as externally. Okay, that's, that's important. Because we know you're a popular girl right now in this community. So, um, but thank you for that, for being open and, um, I'm wanting to establish those relationships, because it's really important.
Bye.
All right, so let's go to our closing public comments.
Valerie Fianaca.
Drive safely. Welcome, Ms. Fianaca.
Hi, y'all, it's been a long time.
Has been.
Had to have surgery on my broken arm.
Oh.
But I watched y'all from my bed while I was recuperating.
Oh, no, I don't, I don't know what to say about that.
I didn't miss any of it. Valerie Fianaca, for the record, I identify as ultra-maga, declared by President Biden domestic terrorist and a proud grandma bear. I first want to congratulate several of you. Dr. Enfield, I've seen you make some moves in your first month that are fairly unprecedented for new superintendents, I'm told, for many teachers who've taught for many years. Putting certified professionals back in classrooms is awesome. This gives me hope for your future in Washoe County. Um, next up, Joe Rodriguez. I watched from my bed while recuperating your discussion with Adam Mayberry with the Washoe Dems and the South Washoe Dems. You actually said that parents still need to have a say in their child's education and not be appointed positions, unlike their counterpart, unlike your counterpart, Adam, who thinks that they should be appointed positions. And Adam, you're the alleged conservative who actually thinks that we might be better off with appointed school boards. I was very disappointed to hear that from you. Unfortunately, Beth Smith's not present for me to address in person, but I will address the public nonetheless. She knocked on doors during her recent campaigning effort in the primary, uh, and she, unfortunately for her, knocked on the door of my, the best man at my wedding almost 50 years ago and claimed to be the only conservative in the race. This is an outright lie and he knew it, and he let me know it, as did many other voters who came down to the Republican office where I work to let me know that, or actually to ask me, is she a conservative? And I unfortunately had to tell them she's not. Uh, parents, please be careful about the claims that people make and pay attention when they, when you vote. Adam, I'm just very disappointed, very disappointed that you think that all of these positions should be appointed.
Can we keep it, do you remember Ms. Fianaca, just not personally?
Yes, okay, well, two, two of our board members made me very proud and two did not. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fianaca.
Kalen Evans.
Welcome, Mr. Evans.
Hello, thank you for the record, Kalen Evans, uh, president of the WEA. Um, I just wanted to take a second, um, to address, you know, love that we are, you know, the tutoring program and that we're putting money, making sure that we're closing these learning gaps. I just can't stress enough, the, the money that we put in, whether it's tutoring program, uh, you know, technology for the schools, um, intercession, winter session, all of these things, none of that is going to have the intended impact that it can have if we do not have a, a fully staffed schools. Um, the issue of retention and attraction needs to be the top priority, and I know that it is, I'm not insinuating that it's not. Um, you know, we have been working, you know, very aggressively, um, as a union with the district in a very collaborative manner, which I very much appreciate. Um, we have to continue to do more. Um, I've been in about two dozen schools as well since the start of the school year. Um, I talk very personally and candidly with these teachers. And while there is more optimism than then we've had in a long time, um, a lot of our staff is drowning, our special education teachers are drowning right now. Um, we are working right now with the district as fast as you guys can possibly move, um, and I understand that everybody is strapped and, you know, we're all doing as much as we can, we have to keep our foot on the gas. Um, you know, teachers, they need to understand that there is going to be support now and on the road, and we're doing everything that we can to communicate those supports, but we have to be as aggressive. I liked, um, Adam's, uh, saying, you know, at all costs, like, we need to do everything that we can right now as a district. Um, we have, um, we have the funds available, right? They're there. We put $20 million into our end fund balance last year on top of the $32 million that we already had, okay? $17 million of that came from unfilled allocations from my bargaining unit. That's teachers, those were positions that were not filled by the district. Every student was still receiving those services, they were still being taught. That is $17 million worth of unpaid labor that we should be using to aggressively address and attract and retain our educators. Okay, and that goes for our classified, our support staff, we need to be doing everything that we can to address this issue. And I know that this is a priority to Dr. Enfield, I know it's a priority to all of you, um, we just have to continue to keep our foot on the grass. I'm not at all implying that we're not, I really appreciate the work that this whole board and Dr. Enfield and her leadership team have been doing. They have been extremely collaborative with us as a union and we're gonna keep working with them. And real quickly before, um, the subpay, as aggressively as we're going after bus drivers, we need to go after subs. We, you guys, we're spending tons of money to have teachers cover comp, uh, prep periods because we don't have subs, it's costing us a lot of money. The licensure, the fingerprinting, we should be eating that as a district, we should be increasing that subpay, we need to get subs in the classroom right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
The board received emails from Gregory Reed, Jill Morbido and Colleen Westlake.
Thank you, JJ. You want, you gonna have a comment?
I would, I, I would like to clarify something.
You want, you want to, we, we don't respond back, but if you want to correct the record, you may.
I do, I do.
You can do that.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. And I, I know it's a silly season, but if somebody comes up to the podium and says something that's not wrong, I'm, I'm gonna correct it. And, you know, this idea that, according to the speaker before, uh, Kalen, that I support appointed, uh, trustees is, is factually incorrect. A question was presented about, in context of, uh, appointed trustees, there's been a lot of discussion with the legislature about appointed trustees, maybe a hybrid sort of, uh, board, uh, and, and I simply said that those are things that, that should be looked at. I didn't necessarily, uh, give my endorsement or support to an appointed body. So, uh, you know, if-
So you like to correct, you have to correct the record?
I, I do. So if, if somebody's gonna make a comment like that, uh, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make sure that, that is clarified. So thank you.
You're allowed to correct the record. Okay, I think that's it, well, that's all our public comment, right, JJ? We got, um, okay. Thank you, everybody, we are, uh, we are in adjournment and our next meeting is September 27th, right here, and our next general, regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, I should say. Uh, we have a policy meeting next week, okay?